Dorby, nineteen twenty-five. Lutzi Mameas.
Here.
Derek Merrill. Jeanette Torres. Yahira Torres. Barry Sherman. Carly Castaneda.
Here.
Michael Belvin.
Here.
Christian Rich. Rafael Manzanas. Michael Talblin. John Zinnerman.
Here.
Please advise the Department of the Open Home Meeting Act to comply with and satisfy the manual and notice of case petition notice in time, this is a conflict of all public meetings and is on accord with adjustment of the city in reference to the property in the neighborhood of the city, all seventy-eight area string in reference to New Jersey, and at the transit and official news period of the city in reference to the whole issue of this matter.
To the head of the United States of America, and to the Republic for its stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you mention the provisions from our meeting? Yeah, let me go back to the number three. Casino, soup kitchen, seven. Sunset Street. Multiple voting members present today. John Zinnerman. Michael Belvin. Carly Castaneda. Barry Sherman. Barry Sherman. Carly Castaneda. Michael Belvin.
Yes.
Yes.
We have two minutes. The resolution for two sixty-five dollar man's street. Same eligible voting members. So, I can motion, pardon, second. Barry Sherman.
Yes.
Carly Castaneda.
Yes.
Michael Belvin.
Yes. Yes.
We have one E U forty, and it's the same voting member. Also, the motion from there. Barry Sherman.
Yes.
Carly Castaneda.
Yes.
Michael Belvin.
Yes.
All right, so we see the first application. Central Avenue, eleven LLC, one-eleven Central Avenue, lot four oh nine, lot two, CD twenty twenty-five dash oh-two. The applicant is seeking to, seeking approval to make a tenant's single-family house into two, two-family homes, actually located in the R five A residential district. Both C and D variances will need to be considered at this point. Members of the board, Thomas, that Kelsa, on behalf of it, I note that we have six members. I was under the impression that we were hoping to have seven, but we haven't yet.
We had one person drop off at the last minute.
So we're only going to have six.
There were some, no responses from some board members, so I can't conclusively say if I might have one or six.
Okay. Should I have a minute to speak to my client? Absolutely. All of these instances, we decided. Member of the board, please. Once again, Thomas F. Kelso, on behalf of the applicant, Central Avenue, one-eleven LLC. The application is for preliminary model segment approval with variances for the construction of two, two-family residential buildings, each building containing two, four-bedroom units. The property is located at lot four oh nine, lot two, and is located in the R five A residential zone where two-family dwelling units are permitted, so this is not a use variance involved. There was actually only one D variance that we're seeking, and that D-V, which is still a question of six versus seven, of course, but it's for floor area ratio. But the magnitude of this floor ratio, floor area ratio is fairly small. The floor area ratio maximum is point five five to one, and we are proposing point six four to one. So it's only point zero nine greater than what's permitted. So it's really a very inconsequential D variance. It's one of the reasons why we decided. We also have several variances that are the result of the existing conditions because the lot, if you look at your plans, the lot's a really pod-shaped lot, it's really a triangle. And because of that, we have a lot depth variance, forty-six feet versus a hundred, but again, that's an existing position. We have several landscaping variances that are, again, the result of really the unusual configuration of the lot, having to do with landscape screen, minimum parking, private parking setback for property line, and some decorative landscaping around the building. It's probably minor in nature, but again, our position is to, of course, by the configuration of the lot. We have a parking variance that's being requested for, where the, the obligation is ten spaces, and we are proposing five spaces. And with regard to the, with the parking variance, I put it in the record in the beginning, I noted typically that the board will ask for a waiver of any residential permit parking spaces. We're requesting that the board consider that in this situation, my client be allowed to keep what he has, which is only one set of parking spaces, so that there would be two residential permit parking, and we would waive what would be required to be the rest, which is very significant on the property, not necessarily what's there to add. And that's just a request that the board will consider, and we hope the testimony will. And finally, the, the final variance that we're talking about is the, the ordinance section that requires that only one principal dwelling can be on a lot. Now, we know that, that exists in all parts of the city, with different variations, whether it's residential or commercial industrial. In this case, we need that variance in order to allow the two, two-family dwellings, because it's going to be on the one lot, where typically you would have one two-family dwelling on each lot. But again, our position is that's really caused by the fact that it's an unusually sized configured lot. It actually has to spare footage if you put it in a square to have the two buildings. So, but because we can't subdivide properly effectively, we're asking for the variance of that, of that ordinance required. And that basically covers, I know we have a design waiver slash variance for the parking size, parking space size, to avoid those who enter a lot. We always called that a waiver, and we had a period where we tended to have a variance. I believe it's waived, but it's okay if one of those are variance. I noticed a focus. So that's really an overview of the application. I'll only present three witnesses for you, our civil engineer, our architect, and our planner, and hopefully fairly simple testimony for you to consider, and hopefully you'll see Dorby to grant the, the application. Unless the board has any questions for you, I will call back to the office, and we'll continue for about fifty minutes. Mr. Christian Roach.
Do you swear or affirm to the, sorry, please state your last name for the record.
Sure, it's Christian Roach, R-O-C-H-E.
Do you swear or affirm to the whole truth?
I did.
May I proceed?
Mr. Roach? Yeah, I'm just going to ask you, please, you're familiar with the application as of the board this evening? You provided civil test, civil engineering requirements for the property?
I did.
Okay. You are a licensed professional engineer of the state of New Jersey?
That's correct.
And I believe you've testified here many times.
I've testified about fifty times, but I have not been around this board in a year or change.
If you will, Chris, then I would ask you to give an overview of the site, kind of orient the board as to what I've been talking about, was the configuration of the lot. Then if you took one through the various engineering requirements of the project, and focus on those variances associated with the property.
Sure. And if I could just jump in real quick, if there's any exhibits you're using that have previously been submitted, if you please just identify those.
You mean me to, and the first exhibit I'm using, we identified as exhibit A-one, it's entitled Ariel, which today's date, twenty nineteen twenty twenty-five. So as Mr. Kelso mentioned, the process I agree to discuss this evening is identified as lot four oh nine, lot two, on the state of New Brunswick's tax map. It's approximately zero point two acres, and it's generally bound by Lorraine Street to the north, Central Avenue to the south, and to the east, and residential buses to the west. The site's occupied by a single-family dwelling, which is on the western side of the site, and associated landscape areas on the eastern portion of the site. And Mr. Kelso also noted the entire properties within the R five A, single-family and two-family residential districts. So I'm in with exhibit A-two, which is entitled one-eleven Central Avenue Plan Rendering, again, today's date, eighteen nineteen twenty twenty-five. And essentially what this exhibit is, is just a color version of the site layout plan, though submitted as part of our site plan application package. What the applicant proposing this evening is to construct two residential buildings, each with a footprint of one thousand four hundred and ninety-four square feet. All buildings will have a height of approximately twenty-nine point six feet, which implies with in zoning ordinance maximum height of thirty. Each of the units will contain two units, instead of buildings, I should say, will contain two units, and each unit will have four bedrooms. The way we've laid out the site, the buildings will be located on the western portion of the site, but we accompany the associated sidewalks, as well as the parking area on the eastern portion of the center. Mr. Kelso noted we are seeing a variance for the number of parking stalls, we're proposing a total of five parking stalls, where ten parking stalls are required, and a planner will provide an investigation for that variance later on this evening. We're also proposing a design waiver for the size of the parking stalls within the parking lot area. We have two compact parking stalls, which are eight feet wide, about sixteen feet long, where the ordinance requires parking stalls to be ninety-five by eight. Accomplished the buildings and the parking area, we are proposing a trash enclosure between the two residential buildings. That trash enclosure will be screened by a chain of vents, block chain of vents, six feet high, with slats for screening purposes, along with some surrounding landscaping around that enclosure as well. We're proposing a concrete pad to be ten feet by ten feet for associated bike racks for bike rack parking for residents. From a stormwater management perspective, although the project doesn't meet the definition of major development or state standards, so from state perspective, we wouldn't be required to add any detention work volume or recharging standards. The city standards do require us to make sure that we're not increasing peak runoff of the site compared to pre-existing conditions, and we're proposing to meet that requirement through post-construction of a linear underground detention system, although we did see a comment in the engineer's letter on that system. We have no objection to complying with any technical comments relative to stormwater management, and while I'm at it, I'll also take the objection to complying with any other technical comments within the board's letter. Same utilities will all be provided off of Central Avenue, water and sewer will be provided by the state of New Brunswick, and gas and electric will be provided by P S E G. We are proposing two light fixtures. One light fixture will be mounted to the building nearest to the parking lot, that'll provide adequate lighting levels for the parking area, and then we also have a ground plate pole adjacent to the pedestrian sidewalks. In combination, those light fixtures do meet the ordinance requirements for required lighting levels on the center. Landscaping, we're proposing six new trees along eighty-nine new shrubs. Mr. Kelso mentioned you are seeing two deviations to landscape requirements. The first just deals with the amount of perimeter or foundation plantings. The code requires foundation plantings along the entire perimeter of the building. While we do that for most of the building perimeter, there are some areas where we have sidewalk immediately adjacent to the building, for just the reason we are requesting that waiver. We're also requesting a waiver from some of the parking lot landscape setback for screening requirements. The ordinance requires a five-foot separation from the parking lot to the lot lines in some areas, especially along the southern end, when we have requiring on the building side, so we're seeking a deviation from that on the landscaping side. The last thing on the landscape is we're proposing two trees to accommodate the adjacent highways and the parking area, one tree on Lorraine Street, the second tree on Central Avenue. Any deficit or true replacement, which is not met onsite, we're proposing to meet that for financial contribution to the city's something. Would you like me to go over the variances? I think you're pretty.
Just, just quickly.
Okay. I'll be someone to tell the difference, Mr. Kelso, but I will just touch on the variances before my end of the day testimony. We discussed the parking variance for the number of parking stalls, we're proposing five or ten are required. We are proposing a design waiver, well, if two stall dimensions are small, stall size three by sixteen, or if nine by eighteen is required. We have a floor area variance, we're proposing zero point six four, and we install for a maximum FAR of zero point five five, and then we had the variance for two structures on these single residential lots. In addition to that, it was just the two aforementioned landscape variances, projected foundation plantings and the parking lot screening.
At this point, I know that I mentioned the lot depth is forty-six feet versus a hundred, and obviously if we can see the lot is a nod-shaped lot, where that's forty-six feet.
Right about this area here, because again, that's just due to the configuration. It's a little unique of a lot, because it has two yards, and we also are trying to shape it.
I don't know if there are any questions for this. Can you reach, can you, members of the board, questions?
Just a little bit about, about any area. So, could you share more about maneuverability with the compact spaces, and where the snow, where the snow would go, and whether people would be able to move their cars in and out?
From a maneuver, okay, you can get non-snow version first, maybe some version. From a maneuverability perspective, one thing that's in making relative to industry standards was a twenty-four foot wide drive aisle, which allows vehicles adequate space to back in and out of the parking stalls, so there won't be a maneuverability issue, even if all those parking stalls are built, someone will be able to get in and out of that. From a snow perspective, like most dwellings, whether it's property maintenance or prior to be hired, snow, movable company, we anticipate that we would push the snow towards the grass areas, which would provide adequate space for them to work.
Is it in the triangle? Because otherwise it's too close.
I mean, the grass areas here, just being adjacent to the highways. Since it's just a small parking lot area, only being five stalls, it's not like you own a car and rather a massive lot, we're anticipating submitting some measures.
I couldn't tell about the lights being covered, and do they need to be covered?
I'm sorry, what was the light?
The lights, are the lights, is the light covered?
Um, right now, it's not covered. We have a ten by ten pad with a white rack on there. If there was a strong preference from the board, we would be resuming covered decorations. I don't think the applicant would have any objections to cover the light area.
I think that could be very natural, if someone had their light, if you go around the light, you can't wet.
If we leave it here, please.
Is this one entrance to the parking lot, or two?
There are two. You can either enter all of Lorraine Street or Central Avenue.
And trash pickup, is it going to be a city pickup?
Standard city pickup, we even anticipate that during those days where we have trash pickup, the site needs trash to be rolled out to the street.
Who's in charge of putting the cans out? It would be, it would be the owner. The online elected introduced the principle of the applicant, which is Mr. Tony G. And I know he might know Tony, his number properties, and a bunch of them, that's how they manage their own properties. Okay, very good. Any questions?
Is there anywhere for people to, like, hang out, relax, right? Be outside?
There's no designated recreation area on the property. You go to sidewalks and entry. Assembled in the sidewalk areas, we know there's no dedicated recreational spaces in this place.
Is there any?
We do have some small grass areas, if someone has a five to seven-year-old, I'm sure my kids would find this grass area to throw around, daddy, at the football, or other athletic space. I think our intention would be to keep those areas as long, just because I think it gives the maximum flexibility for that recreational space to be.
Is parking going to be assigned to a unit, one space per unit?
The parking will be a controlled scenario, I'm funny if I'm stating it, you try to name it, but it's going to be a post-controlled scenario when you're leasing the units. You will know how many parking spaces your unit has, so if you're making an informed decision, before you sign that lease, know whether I'm going to have one parking park for you, or two, depending on the shakes out, so yes.
Can you please state your name, story, last name for the record?
Kurt Ludwig, L U D W I G.
Do you swear or affirm to the whole truth?
Yes.
Well, Kurt, you are a licensed professional architect of the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
That's correct.
In that capacity, you perform after architectural services and development for this project?
Yes.
Could you give the board the benefit of your professional qualifications and experience?
Sure. I graduated from Arizona State University nineteen eighty-seven. I had architecture practice in Milton, New Jersey, nineteen ninety-one, I'm still at that location. I've testified in front of numerous boards, in this board for many years, and everyone has a certain quality. Thank you.
Kurt, if you could, just as an overview, give us a, a general description of the, of the units that we are proposing, and then you can go through the architectural detail.
Sure.
Let me give them a better understanding, including the exhibit section.
Sure. Should I label this A-three?
A-three.
So this is A-three, it's a site key plan, site key diagram, similar to Chris's plan. I'm showing the two structures, the structure consists of two residential units, each unit will have four bedrooms, a total of one thousand four hundred and ninety-four square feet per unit. Each structure is the same area, same footprint, it just turned ninety-three on the site. Next word, which I'll label A-four, is the typical floor plan page. Our first floor consists of an open floor plan, with a kitchen, living area here, a bedroom, and bathroom. The structures are designed to allow great construction, so in the basement, we have a stair to the second floor, where we have three additional bedrooms, two bathrooms and laundry room. And then our exterior elevations, which I'll label A-five, have siding materials, hardboard siding, practically shingles, some stones, some metal roofing. When we approached the project, we wanted it to have the same scale proportions as typical residential structures in the neighborhood, and I think we've done that, especially with the labor groups, siding materials, and so on. That fruits my presentation.
Perhaps if you could just identify, I don't know if it's just my angle there, but it looks like we labeled that one also, the fourth.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you. I was checking.
If you could just touch upon the utilities, the heating and air.
Yes, each unit will have its own separate zone for its air and heating system, a hundred fifty amp electrical service, gas appliances, solar detector system.
I have no further questions, Mr. Kurt. Any member of the board, professional?
Wasn't anything that distinguishes two units from the outside, or does it look exactly the same?
They'll look basically the same. I mean, we have orangey ways here, but yeah, we wanted the structures to.
Same color.
To be continuous, yes.
Does the applicant need? Is it, that's our identity, is it one-bedroom units, two-bedroom?
Four bedrooms.
Four-bedroom?
Per unit.
Okay.
Yeah, the totals would be sixteen units.
Sixteen?
Two thousand five.
Sixteen bedrooms, I said, yeah, I'm sorry, sixteen bedrooms.
Excuse me, I just sixteen people, or sixteen?
I think it's twenty, it's three of the four nature samples.
Ah.
Right.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
This time I'll call Mr. Sean Moronski for testimony. Can you please state your name, story, last name for the record?
Sean S.E.A.N. Moronski, M-O-R-O-N-S-K-I.
Do you swear or affirm to the whole truth?
I do.
Showing your licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
Yes, and my license is current.
And in that capacity, you're familiar with the proposal for the board this evening, and the various relief in form of variances, a request from the board?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Kurt.
Rather than we ask the specific questions, run through the justifications, if you can, and I will.
Sure. Okay, and as you've heard, in previous two witnesses, we're dealing with a rather unique lot in terms of it being triangular shaped, and a lot of the relief is tied and driven by the challenges of development on the site. We'll start with the FAR variance, which is a D-four variance. The FAR variance has its proposed relatively minor deviation, but having it built as, as it is, the concern with an FAR variance is that is the site able to accommodate concerns? Can it meet the setback requirements? Can it meet the coverage requirements? Can it adequately provide for the units on the site? And I believe, and based on the layout, we do meet the setback and the coverage requirements. Parking, which we'll go into, there'd be at least one space for each unit. So I do believe that as it's designed, that the FAR as proposed is able to address the concerns about floor area that exceeds the limit for the lot. The two principal structures on the lot, and if you look at, and I'm referring to the rendering, any way you would try and subdivide this, you can't subdivide it in a conventional fashion. It would just make practical difficulties in terms of layout, in terms of being able to put a building within a footprint that would be somewhat reminiscent of the surrounding neighborhood. And I do believe that, because the lot is almost double the size of, it's ninety, over ninety-three hundred square feet, that barely any lot you would admit you would try and subdivide would cause a lot more practical difficulty than as the lot is proposed to be laid out. With regards to the parking spaces, they are located at the narrowest part of the site. There are also two spaces that we're requesting a waiver for, eight by sixteen, but the twenty-four foot drive aisle and having access on both sides of the parking lot does help with concerns about being able to adequately circulate in and out of those spaces. Also, you're talking about a low-volume traffic parking area. These spaces are for the residents only. This is not going to be frequented by others passing, passing through. With regards to the parking setback, there's no setback at the lot line in terms of the screening. However, the distance from the parking lot to the curb with the street is ten feet, so there is some, there certainly is some distance to the street line, and you also have a tree and some landscaping at the, at the end. And you also have a tree and some landscaping at the end, at the eastern end of the lot. Also, the parking spaces are oriented away from the houses on Central and Lorraine. Because a concern with parking spaces would be the potential for lights, but they're oriented in the other direction. And there is some small screening, there's some screening in the eastern area, which can minimize concerns about light. Again, with regards to the, excuse me, with regards to the landscaping, overall, particularly on the western side of the site, as the rendering shows, that there is a substantial amount of landscaping for the area, and a deficit, as Mr. Roche noted, would be addressed through the city's treaty. We have to address the purposes of zoning. Purpose A, encouraging actions to guide appropriate use of most public health, safety and general welfare. The relief allows for the proposed residential development within the building envelope, and it's at scale, in terms, the buildings are a scale similar to the surrounding neighborhood. Purpose G, providing sufficient space in appropriate locations for variety of uses. This project contributes to the range of housing types available, and is consistent with the scale of the neighborhood. We have to address the negative criteria, that there's no substantial detriment to the public good. We are not exceeding the maximum purbius or lot coverage, we're not exceeding setbacks, we're minimizing impacts on neighbors, there's adequate distance between the buildings, and in terms of the parking that the design allows for efficient circulation in a parking area that has use limited to the residents. There's no substantial impairment to the zoning ordinance or zone plan. If you look at your twenty twenty-two master plan goals, both land use goals maintain the character of the existing residential neighborhood where appropriate, while also recognizing changing circumstances of certain areas within the city. But this relief allows for development that's consistent with the residential character of the area. And then land use goal number two, expanding the housing supply to different segments of the housing market. This relief allows for additional two-family units in a lot where it's appropriate, and it's located near the hospital, near the college, it's an walkable area, and there's buses nearby. So overall, I do believe that the requested variances can be granted with the reasons stated. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. That completes our presentation, this board has.
Any other professionals, I have a question for this witness.
Yes, and I would also say, even though we indicate that the units will be, the parking spaces will be assigned, you know, the individual user of that doesn't, that doesn't legally limit not having a visitor park, because it's just very well being, the visitor could park there, there's no rest. It's the, being identified by the individual who is entitled to that space, so. But yes, we were just asking to keep the, because it was a single family home there, so it's only the two parking plus whatever visitor parking for that, and we did the rest, which could be. That completes our presentation.
Any member of the public want to forward another application?
Can you please state your name, surname, last name for the record?
Clark Smith.
Do you swear in front of the whole church, can I have the truth?
I do.
You have five minutes.
So good evening, I'm the owner of residence twenty-two, running street for the last twenty years. I asked the board to reject the proposal, and it requires a requested variance, the zoning in this part of town was pretty clear. One, two, and not two, two, and designed for a project like this. I also have significant concerns, applications to street parking, stormwater, water and sewer utilities are common with the proposal. So the parking lot has four spots, one being a cab, for four, four bedroom units, and that's not that good. And then we factor in there's an entrance and exit of fifty, someone on feet, that's taking away street parking. So effectively, I don't think there's any parking here, but there's going to be a lot more people trying to park on small two-dead streets. As for stormwater, there's only catch basins at the end of Lorraine Street in Central Ave. All stormwater from Lower Street comes funneling down all those streets to the end. These basins and streets can overflow when it's had a rain. I know personally, considering Hurricane Ida, Miami's sustained twenty-five thousand dollars in damages due to overflow from the street and other properties. I don't see this proposal putting any intake into the system, just funneling it into the street. Finally, I don't see any discussion about the impact of the water and sewer lines. There's going to be, the water and sewer lines potentially are a hundred years old in this part of town. No one can tell you if they're, how big the sewer lines are, if there's lead connecting to the water pipes. So what happens to these systems when the unit is abandoned? And last, I just have some concerns during the president that's going to set, which is that zoning is going to be changed. There's going to be a big shift from owner occupied residence to rental houses on the street. How playing an approval is going to trigger other landlords to start building oversized properties to detriment of the smaller number of resident multi-居室. Just to sum up, the zoning for the neighborhood is clear, and properly built, what's allowed to, you want to.
You have a member of the public, I'd like to speak on this application.
I actually didn't think about the fact that the entrance to the parking lot is taking up parking space for on-street parking, so I thought that they leave the two residential that we want to for that.
Would you be in the manner of allowing to keep a visitor's space though, with the two residential?
How many cars can park in the opening? No, no, oh, I mean, like, yeah, entrance.
How big are the driveways?
The driveways are twenty-four feet wide.
That's about one and a half-ish. Regular parking space under the zoning is eighteen feet wide, long. So twenty-four is just shy of one and a half.
They're losing one and a half to the parking.
That's right.
They're losing one and a half to the parking.
No, no.
Size is different. That's size of driveway.
One per street, one per street, yeah.
There are driveways now on the existing property? I'm sorry, there are driveways now on the existing property, right?
Yeah.
Yes, there are.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. And so that one will be eliminated, and replaced with these two?
Yes.
Okay.
How big is the lot?
Plus or minus thirteen feet.
All right, if you have, can be in the manner of to just keep them alone?
Yes.
Any other questions on this? Okay, same now.
Then they want to reach some conditions. All right, should the board act favorable, the following conditions shall apply. Lines with the city engineer report dated April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, submission of all necessary easements and or cross-taxes agreements for review and approval by the board attorney and engineer, payment of site performance bonded in amount reviewed and approved by the city engineer, submission of site inspection as per deposit for engineering, the inspection fees in amount calculated pursuant to title sixteen point two four point one six zero, payment of all water and sewer connection fees pursuant to titles thirteen point oh four and thirteen point oh eight, issuance of a road opening permit from the city engineer required. Lines with the terms of the big enough planning reports dated April twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, mandatory monetary contribution to the city's street conservation trust fund in amounts to be required by title eight point four eight, planning with U S for funded for all anticipated most approved reviews, and of any other fees the city will run related to the development or use of this project, and of all assigned taxes and wire and sewer fees. No six kind of planning or eligible waivers, we are not planning for eligible waivers, two or so completed, which are eligible waivers. All right, we have the conditions for the bike racks to be covered. There will be a minimum legal parking payment required, and the permit parking will be waived with the exception of the existing visitor permit. All utilities and other site improvements will be maintained by the applicant at a total expense. All on-site utilities will be constructed underground. All temporary cots of the public property shall require to be canceled approval. All construction stages shall be done on-site unless an approach is allowing for public property to be approved by city council. The street shall be kept clean, as said in the decree, the applicant shall cause the streets to be cleaned to direct if used so by the director of public works. Tractor bats shall be installed at all construction exits, replacing their damaged streets, curbs and sidewalks as per directions of city engineer. Scheduled a pre-construction meeting with the city engineer department, and we have variances for floor area, parking, and the multiple principal residential structures on the lot, new design areas with parking stall dimensions, landscape buffer with landscape technical requirement, and the parking setback. Is there anything else? All right. Sorry, did you mention the two principal structures? Yes, I did.
All right, I have a motion to approve.
It's convenient?
Yes.
Barry Sherman?
Yes.
Gassina?
Yes.
Michael Bellman?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Yeah, this is.
All right, our second application is here, and it's Shana Coco and Coco Shannon, Seven Maple Street, block four ten, block twelve point oh one, C B twenty twenty four dash forty-seven. The applicant is looking to expand the existing two-family house, spoken with the R five A zone district, looking for C and D lands.
Now, on the second floor, on behalf of the board, Mr. Director, I know it says in the introduction, maybe we have six numbers, but there is no B variance on this application. There are only C variances. Correct. Yeah, the, all of this. We've gone through several iterations of this, and from the beginning, we had several B variances. We've eliminated any variances with scaled back, so that what you see is really the level. And to point out, also something that may be a little bit unusual, this is not a site plan application, because there's no second name requirement for a two-family structure. So what we actually have are just the variances, and they're all C variances. Makes it a little bit easier to have an overview of that, understand that we're actually here. But the variances you're seeking, some of these are existing conditions. First, there is a front yard setback of eight point six feet, whereas ten is required. That's an existing condition, but then, front of that building is not changing. Side yard setback of three point five feet on one side, whereas a minimum of five feet is required. And listen to this, three point six is existing. So we're going from three point six to three point five. Want to figure out what that is? It's an inch. You know why it's an inch? Because of the windows stuck, I found that out the other day. In other words, the window, so sticks out an inch more than was there today. So it technically expands the variance from three point five to three, three point six to three point five, so crazy. I might have pushed the window back, that's. There's a very hard setback of twenty-six point five feet, whereas a minimum of thirty feet. So we're talking about a three and a half inch on the rear yard. And then we are proposing three parking spaces, whereas four parking spaces are required. So we're one parking space short. And also finally, the purbius coverage of gating, whereas a maximum sixty is permitted. Part of that is a double gate, and create parking on the side. So now we have parking on the side at a third shot. So that's really an overview, it's not a site plan, it's those, what I'll say are technical variances. We're not changing the building from more than two families, we're just expanding it back. That's an overview? Now, hey, we're not raising the ability of the building for us today. I have a question more on our. Yeah, because I think they have.
I think it was like less than thirty.
Yeah, it's less than thirty, because it's thirty or less now, because we haven't raised it, especially three inches or something. All right, conflicts? All right, thanks. This time I will call for testimony of Mr. Frank Carroll. Can you please state your name, surname, last name for the record?
Frank Carroll, F A R, R D, you swear in front of the whole church, can I have the truth? I do.
All right, thank you. If you could, Frank, give us an overview of the civil engineering components of the site, variances to the site, and to the extent that you can, identify where the variances are for the most part. I think we really deal with those variances, if you can label that.
Absolutely. So the site is located at Seven Maple Street. It is an neighborhood that's surrounded with various residential uses, and there's a church at the corner of the intersection, the intersection street, which is Somerset. It's mid-block here, it's a fifty by a hundred block, which conforms with lot area. The area and depth are complying for this lot, since it's a five thousand square foot lot, meaning the R five A zone. It's an existing, the rest of the user plan was submitted with the application, it's not been benefited, altered, colored or factored in any way. So on the left-hand side of the sheet here, you'll see the existing structure, and a modest asphalt parking area. The existing setback is relative to the front porch, which is eight point six feet, that is not being changed in post-condition, but also providing some landscaping in that area. And then the three point six foot side yard is this right-hand side, this right sideline. I made a little oversales in noting the three point five difference, three point six to three point five. I think that inch on that windowsill is probably exempt under the same type of different ease course, as big windows and other features. Nonetheless, it's on the plan, it's three point five feet here in the back, where we captured that windowsill. But again, the mass of the building really isn't changing along that side yard, it's still at three point six feet. The rear yard is existing at thirty-seven feet, that is where the proposed building conditions taking place, roughly four hundred and fifty square feet. It's a little bit less than that, the architect will provide that in specific for you. It's just under four hundred and fifty square feet here at the rear of the property. And the driveway will, for the most part, exist where it does today, if we shift over a little bit, to better align with the features for the site. Just make sure I didn't miss anything. We have existing building, I have calculations in the cover sheet, it's noted on the plan as less than thirty, but it's actually twenty-nine point three five. And we go through the analysis of the rating of the front building and the height of the peak. To be clear, it's not any taller than the building that's there now. It is absolutely no taller than the, than the wall. The site has a twelve-foot proposed driveway on the left-hand side of the sheet, where we extend into the property, and at the rear, there's two parking spaces provided behind. At the rear, there's two parking spaces provided behind the building, so it's sort of from view. Third space is sort of a parallel space that is on the right-hand side of the driveway, between the driveway and the building itself, which will also be screened through extensive plantings along the frontage. And it's actually not in the front yard setback at all. It's along the side. The changes of describing to the site to 450 square foot building vision and the additional spare asphalt area for parking spaces increases the impervious coverage from 60% today to 80% being proposed. However, the increase is from our law, which is really the biggest concern related to impervious coverage. It's being mitigated through a proposed onsite stormwater management system that is actually going to provide a reduction in peak flow relative today. It's not, just not worse than. It is a, at least a 24% reduction in the two-year storm, and it varies between 2 and 100. It's roughly 24 to 43% reduction in the flow. So we've done a little bit better than the ordinance minimum on the mill grid. The three parking spaces identified is one short of the ordinance requirement of 4.2 spaces is required as to be proposed, so we're requesting a variance for that one.
Now, it's a two-family. It's actually just four. It's not, it's not centered to the rise.
It's not centered to the increase in...
To the rise. Before the three-family was subject to a different RSIS tier, we put it at 2.1 per unit.
It's two three-bedroom units.
Right, which is two bedrooms, for a two-family, that's two bedrooms, usually it's four total. It's not, I mean, mathematically it doesn't matter, but it's not 4.2 or four.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm spotting you two tentages.
Thank you. I think we still need a one parking space variance. We believe that the site can reasonably accommodate the D. One other thing I would point out is if you have good neighbors, you might actually be able to park five or six spaces on the site. I can tell them legitimately by the engineering standards show three. The other spaces would be stacked up at the driveway, not really, not really the thing that we want to propose, but if the residents there choose to be good neighbors with one another and park additional vehicles on the lot, they probably would. Doesn't meet your engineering standards. It's not really the configuration, how to... That'll be included today, but if they choose to, that's a state certificate. We also have, in this parking area, we have a couple of air conditioning units. They are more than the minimum required relative to the side yard, which is 15 feet, which is 10 feet for how the category would be necessary. It's also deep enough in the lot and beyond some landscaping in the front that they're not going to be the first thing you see when you cut back property. We also have new water and gas services. The electrical service would continue to be of federal, I believe, of the whole. But we have two three-quarter inch water services and two one-inch gas services. That's due to the increase in demand that's going to be necessary between the existing one bedroom units and the proposed three bedrooms. And those are proposed to connect to the street. We're trying to consolidate all the, all of the street disturbance here in this area as best we can. Lighting is proposed. We have several small, sort of acorn residential decorative style lights that do provide sufficient lighting across the property. I believe this plan is complying with the city ordinance for minimum lighting standards. The sanitary sewer service exists, and we no reason believe that it is in need of repair. However, I believe it's been mentioned in the engineers report that they would like a TV that certified its serviceability. At the time they go through construction, I would be comfortable with that. We are also proposing a couple of trees. We are proposing two new street trees, or they're on the applicant's property, they're not out in the right way. We're proposing two trees and a number of small shrubs specifically for frontage landscaping and a lot, in addition to the landscaping that's provided, screening the proposed parking stall. One other note in the engineers report is that I believe for the existing stair for this property extends into the right way, which is an existing condition. There's no changes to that stair will be proposed. We request that just be permitted to stay there. It's not, it doesn't seem to be hurting anybody today. So we're proposing that, I believe. And I believe recovery basis.
Well, I just got to make one comment. It's not, it's not really relevant. It's just for future planning iterations. I'm presuming that the three condensers are like the leftover from prior iteration.
It's probably only going to be two condensers. It would seem, it would seem probably unnecessary to have three condensing units for three, two bedrooms. Yeah, yeah. They want to split between a front bedroom and a back bedroom.
So you mentioned, say, barrier recovery and storm control is an issue. Is there a way to maybe adhere to the driveway that would boost the recovery?
Good question. So we're talking about probably either coarse pavement or coarse asphalt pavement. That isn't what's on the plan. Also technically, by sitting within, I believe, would trigger the impervious coverage requirement anyway.
Yeah, so as far as...
It is gravel, but still, so...
As far as zoning code is concerned, anything that you park on is impervious coverage. Engineers might have a different take, and they have all their own formulas and factors that they apply to the zoning variance.
Such factors.
It could be, it could be, and we could still have it as impervious coverage.
Yeah, I do have a different opinion, but they, handcuffed by the rules, impervious coverage is impervious coverage. I don't believe in this case that changing interior would provide a substantial benefit, although it would increase cost. The system here is perfectly able to handle the increase.
All right. At this time, I would like to ask you a few questions. Please state your name and surname for the record?
David Rosado, R.O.S.A.T.L.
You start from the top of the list.
I do.
Yes.
I think, thank you. Rosado, if you could then actually go through the architectural components of the building condition?
Yes, absolutely. Okay, so we're dealing here with the existing two-story family dwelling, which is approximately 1,714 square feet. And we're proposing a two-story addition along the rear of the building. And the addition will be approximately 882 square feet. And the total for footage of the entire building will be around 2,596 square feet. Each apartment on the first and second floor will be, we're proposing three bedrooms and two bathrooms. The three bedrooms off the back, and the two bathrooms from the middle, and one study room, and one, and then an open floor time with a kitchen, dining, and living room. And the common area is 367 square feet. The front porch remains, it's existing, and leads to a common hallway, vestibule for both apartments, where the stairs lead to both apartments and the apartment on the second floor. And within the vestibule, we will have mail packages and mail slot area. The basement level, depicted on here, is state, remains existing. We're not touching it. And it's a storage and utility purpose, for storage and utility purposes only. Has an existing ceiling, not ceiling of 6.6. And the addition, and then for the addition, we're proposing crawl space. And this area here, it's actually not annotated, but it's a crawl space, so it's part of the existing structure. The exterior proposing, we're proposing party clinic, bio-siding on all facades, and the windows will be vinyl plaid with hardy tread. The roof will be asphalt shingles throughout. And again, as Frank mentioned, the roof will align exactly with the existing, so we're not increasing any of that. The apartments will be conditioned by a split system with purpose, and they're all installed in the basement. Actually, there is a, just wanted to mention that there is a graphical error in the model plans. We're still showing a stack from the chimney that's, runs, it's existing, that's an existing chimney, which is going to be demolished. Okay, so that's what that is. The, so we're doing, we're proposing a split system, for instance, installed in basement, service people apartments, and that's units, as Frank mentioned, the engineer mentioned that they're going to be on the northern side of the building, facing the driveway.
Thank you, Andrew. There's a little question to have. First, for the...
Member of the board, any questions? All right, team.
Thank you, thank you. Before I continue, I would be missed, I wanted to introduce my client, Samir Shahad. So they should be done. I see her, please, she's in. At this time, before my final witness, your testimony, Allison Toffin, thanks for your time.
Hello.
Could you please state your name and surname for the record?
Allison Toffin, C.O.F.I.
You start from the top of the list.
Yes, I do.
Allison Toffin, you've heard before also?
Yes, and I'm still licensed to look.
If you could, Allison, and if you could, give us the benefit of your review of the variances that are being requested, and, and hopefully by justification of the terms.
So the applicant is requesting five variances tonight. You've got the front yard setback, side yard setback, rear yard setback, impervious coverage, and parking. All the variances the applicant is requesting are called or perceived variances, and there are two tests to establish the variance in the municipal land use law. The first is the C1 standard. It's commonly called hardship variance, and that's justified when the lots will be shaped to proper ground conditions, or is in this case, pre-existing structures. Create a situation where the strength application of the ordinance results in hardship. The second standard is the C2 standard, and that's justified on the variances, advance the purposes of the municipal land use law, and the benefits outweigh the benefits. So looking first and last, C1 standard, the hardship standard. There are two of these variances that clearly fall under that category. The first is the front yard setback. We've got 8.6 feet or 10 feet is required, but this is an existing condition and it's not being offered. That's a very clear hardship situation. The second is that side yard setback, 3.5 feet. It's consistent with the existing side yard setback. This condition is being increased a little bit by the addition, but that matches the existing building setback, and so there's hardship. You do want that condition to match the existing law. The second standard is a C2 standard, and that's another lens of the board to look at these variances for, and this would apply to all of the variances the applicant is requesting. The net impact of this development is to allow for the expansion of the existing two-family dwelling in a manner that creates a more efficient use of the land. And this advances several purposes of the municipal land use law. Purpose E, to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities. Purpose G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses, including residential uses. Purpose J, which includes preventing urban sprawl and degradation of the environment through improper use of land. And purpose N, which includes providing a more efficient use of land. So the benefits, from my opinion, of these variances outweigh the benefits. The benefits include, again, advancing these purposes of the municipal land use law and providing for an appropriate population density and a more efficient use of the land. It's my opinion that there are no significant benefits to the variances that are being across it. Again, the front side backs, it has the deviation, side yard setback matches the existing condition. The rear yard setback variance is about three and a half feet. This still leaves adequate rear yard area to provide for two parking spaces. If you were to move that building along to the conforming setback, it would not allow for a third. Really would create a usable area. It's better to have the residents use that area inside a building. It's our opinion that site, the site provides sufficient off-screen parking to support the use despite the need for variance for one space. And the extra impervious coverage here does not increase runoff from the site, but does allow for three parking spaces. The variances requested do not impair the intent and purpose of your master plan or zoning ordinance. Opposed use and the intensity of the use are both permitted and appropriate. And application advances several purposes of the land use goals of the master plan, including maintaining the character of existing residential neighborhoods where appropriate, while also recognizing the changing circumstances of certain areas within the city, expanding housing supply for different segments of the housing market, continue to encourage walkable neighborhoods by committing appropriate uses of residential and commercial uses of neighborhoods, and promoting appropriate infill development and redevelopment of big under-user derelict properties. So for those reasons, it's my opinion that the board could find justifications supporting these variances and grant it without detriment to the health, safety, and general welfare of the public, and they would not create any substantial detriment or harm to your master plan or zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Allison.
Any other questions? Member of the board, any questions?
That concludes our presentation.
All right, to the public. Any member of the public, if you want to come forward, I think you have a comment on this application. Any young ones, folks, a public motion for discussion?
She bore that favor, the following conditions shall apply. Compliance with the terms of the city engineer report dated March 14th, 2025. Submission of all necessary easements and or processes agreements from U.N. dual-bidet attorney engineer prior to filing this. Amendment of second form response in the amount given to the listed here. Submission of site inspection expert deposit per engineering inspection piece amount calculated since July 16, 2024, 01/06/2025. Amendment of all water sewer connection piece since July 14, 2024, 01/08/2025. Issuance of a road opening permit to the city engineer required. Compliance with the terms of the city planning report dated March 24, 2025. Contribution to the city treaty for renovation trust fund and amount to be required by Title 8.48. Planning with U.S. for funding for all anticipated most approved reviews. Amendment of any other fees to the city who runs related development or use of this project. Payment of all outstanding water, taxes, sewer fees. No second plan for a favorable waiver. Here, not planning for a favorable waiver. Pre-ultimately completed, just for a favorable waiver. All utilities and other site improvements will be maintained by the applicant at their sole expense. All on-site utilities will be constructed underground. All temporary projections of public creditway shall require city council approval. All construction stages shall be done on-site unless an approach is allowing for public creditways approved by city council. Streets shall be kept clean to a certain degree. The applicant shall cause streets to be cleaned if directed to so by the Director of Public Works. Tractor batts shall be installed at all construction exits. Replacement of damaged streets, curbs, and sidewalks as per direction of city, as per direction of city engineer. Scheduled a pre-construction meeting with the City Engineering Department. And for new variances, we have the side, single side yard, rear yard setback, impervious service variances, and parking variances. Do you want me to account for the front yard setback one in my list? It's an existing condition. I don't know if it's credible for you. Sorry.
Okay, it's Mervis?
Yes.
Barry Sherman?
Yes.
Cola Castaneda?
Yes.
Michael Belvin?
Yes.
Kristen Rich?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, the next application is Houston Fuel LLC, 129 East Avenue, Block 200, Block 15, ZB 2021, Bed 12. The applicant is looking to modify or try, try approval in order to alter the restriction on hours of operation. Do you have a moment?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Dave, a moment to the board, next speaker here is seeking. Mr. Chairman, as you know, the applicant, Houston Fuel LLC, had previously applied to the force of the trigger board for preliminary fine site plan and de-use variance and bulk error to the league. As you correctly noted, as the chairman of the property, 129 East Avenue. The applicant had previously obtained site plan approval and D. The applicant had previously obtained site plan approval and D1 use variance approval to, uh, to operate the convenience store at the gasoline station. And as you recall, the prior plans, the convenience retail store is located on the ground floor of the existing building and is approximately nineteen seventy-three square feet, uh, along with the office on the second floor. Pursuant to your ordinance, the proposed retail use, as you were aware, of the property is permitted in C three B zone. Resolution of approval on this application originally was adopted on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. I looked at that date and I was like, wow. Uh, and that was, of course, in connection with the previous, uh, application. But as you correctly pointed out, Mr. Chairman, as far as the conditions of that approval, the hours of operation require the applicant to close the gasoline station at R P M and the convenience store to close at eleven. We are here tonight to seek relief from the ordinance with regard to the hours of the operation relative to the convenience store, to operate with the board's permission, twenty-four hours, seven days a week. And we're here, uh, to seek request to modify that, uh, condition. We have several witnesses here this evening, Mr. Chairman. We have a representative of the owner and our planner, Frank Anticell, who was here obviously for the last meeting. Uh, the applicant is going to testify on the need and the justification in their view for this request. And our planner will, uh, discuss with the basis and the justification for seeking this relief, particularly with analyzing convenience stores that operate twenty-four seven within, across proximity to this location. So I don't have anything further unless the board does, otherwise we can proceed with our first witness. Is that our mark?
That works.
Okay, great.
Viddy?
We should have this morning.
Yes. Can you please state your name and your last name for the record?
Yeah, here. Please show me the Sean Conker.
You square off to the whole truth?
Yes.
For the record, we will call you, uh, Viddy. That's your, that's your.
That's what I told by.
Okay, fair. Okay. Uh, good evening. Um, the applicant, obviously, is Eastern Fuel LLC, and your affiliation with that, Viddy?
The owner, the executive partner.
Okay, and you are a member of the.
A member.
A member, very good, okay. Um, and Eastern Fuel, currently owns the property, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Could you just give us an overview of the relief you're seeking, uh, and why you're seeking to modify the hours of operation for the convenience stores?
Sure, of course. We've noticed that as we get closer and closer to the applicant, the closing time of the store, we tend to get, uh, a whole bunch of customers that come in a little past eleven because it takes time before you close your tail out and everything. And people all want to rush in to get, you know, whatever they need to get, cigarettes, candy, soda, whatever it is. And we noticed that a lot of these customers, and it's an overwhelming majority, is actually the EMS squad that parked there overnight. And we also get a lot of the police department vehicles and workers' vehicles that parks there overnight. And they come in and out of the store, and out of the store all night, up until eleven, and after that point, we're shut down. And we've observed our cameras, we have sensors that sort of monitor if the glass has been shaking or something. They have like, you know, shaking sensor. And it shows us when the glass has been shaken, and usually that's when, why does it shake? When someone tries to enter, but they can't enter. So we check the cameras, we just notice this regular patrons trying to enter the store after hours. They're not able to get whatever they want. And many of these patrons are, obviously, students are on the area, but it's also the people that are parked there, which is the EMS, the police, and, uh, other emergency management crew that are just standing. For instance, there's actually a tow truck that parks there too. And his entire responsibility is if there's any car that's on the street, the cops have to stand on my property. So if they need to get a car out of the way, he's always ready to go.
So these are individuals, say, that are, you know, first responders. What about also on staff, we've not, rather would?
Yes, a lot of nurses and doctors in the middle of the night, they're coming in scrubs. You can see them on the camera. They're trying to enter the store in the middle of the night and hours, we're close.
And I presume you, you're aware that a lot of convenience stores within the city limits are also operating twenty-four seven?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
The one across the street from me is operating twenty-four hours. And, uh, the one down the road, not on the same block, on the corner over there, that one's operating till at least like three and a half. And we have a bunch of, we have a list of them that are operating past twenty-four, or they offer it twenty-four hours, seven, seven days a week.
Okay. Now, in terms of, after we received approval from the board on our prior application, have you complied with all the terms and conditions of that approval, including all the improvements that will require the landscaping, the operating of the building, the facility, everything's been complied with?
Yes, I think everything's perfect. Uh, the way it looked on paper looks better in person. If you guys ever drive down there, see, it looks way better than what you spoke before. And I was told by, um, my father spoke to a member of the, uh, the zone, the building department. And my dad said, why is it that we have to be so meticulous with that? Because they said, we want your store to be an example for every single store we build going forward. The way you guys are building this thing is looking incredible. Okay, and they wanted to.
All right. Did you have anything else you wanted to add? Okay, very good. Mr. Chairman, I don't have any further questions.
I was asked this, uh, since I wasn't on board at the time of the first. Why was rent just for limited time?
Uh, well, that's what the, that's what the, um, the applicant had been required to comply with. So they were restricted out of both the aspect of gasoline and the convenience store. Uh, and the applicant at the time had agreed to that, um, because we felt, A, that we wanted to work with the city and obviously get approval.
Right.
Uh, and two, um, we thought it was important that the operator, the owner, had some track record and could basically establish themselves within the city, and that was a big part of it. And plus, your professional staff recommended that as well.
Yeah, obviously, I'm telling it for you. It was a conditional use variance application by Republicans, and so as part of the fact.
Correct. And but the, the condition of use is only, and you hear this, you're saying, so it's only related to gasoline portion?
Not, that's correct. Gas stations were made of conditional use.
Correct.
And just to clarify, you're looking to change the timing for the convenience?
All. Correct.
Uh, one question, sir. Since you approved this application, um, have you stuck to the eleven o'clock P M closing time?
Yes.
Under oath, you're saying you've stuck to that time?
Yes, we try to, as soon as possible, yes.
You haven't gone over?
We close at eleven, and we try to stay as possible to it. While we're closing out the tills, it takes half an hour or so. Sometimes people come in, they gotta, they're holding their trousers, saying, I'm going to use the bathroom. Kind of have to let them in, just feel bad. And that's happened once or twice, and I can admit to that, that does happen where people want to go. A majority of our customers at night are actually just people wanting to go and use the bathroom. And also then they also take something up if they need to. But by the time we close, mop, broom, close out the till, it takes about half an hour before.
But you're not advertising.
We're, we're, all the signs are off at eleven, yeah.
And your pumps are shut off?
Pumps are shut off, yes. Yeah, we put cones all around the pump so nobody else can come get fuel.
How typically, so people who are coming and they're checking on the door, are they walking or driving? What is the percentage?
A lot of them are walking.
What percentage do you think is walking?
Well, given that we're surrounded by pubs and clubs, uh, I would say, I'm just generalizing here. If half of my customers, I would say, is actually the emergency squad and all the police that stand there. And they know the place is closed after eleven, they're not the ones who knew it. So I would say a hundred percent of the walking customers, I was the one who's trying to get inside to see if it's open.
But the first responders, I'm certain.
They know going forward that, yeah. And they've expressed their concern multiple times, like, why are you guys closing so early? We, we want to get stuff, you know, we're standing here all night, we get hungry, and we gotta go across the street. So I was like, all right, I'll, I'll see what we can do. That's why I met with David, if we can do something about it.
Do you think there will be extra contract?
Sorry?
Do you think there will be extra contract?
There shouldn't be, no, because a lot, like I said, a hundred percent of the customers after hours that don't want the places closed after eleven are all the people from the clubs and clubs. And the only traffic that comes in at night is actually the EMS, because nobody else is allowed to park. And I specifically stated to the cops, and I, I go there after hours sometimes, because, you know, I mean, I go to the clubs and want some more help. And so I meet with the cops there, and I say, hey, I'm the owner of the property. If you could do me a favor, I'll let you guys park here, as you guys do. Just make sure no one's making a ruckus and make sure that, you know, people do not park here unoccupied. And everybody will make sure. So we don't really get any particular traffic on the property. It's mostly the EMS.
If you stay open for hours, what would be your estimate of car traffic?
I can't go.
Well, would you say that now that we, that we still have people walking in?
Still be the same as, as we right now. There will still be foot traffic. I mean, the only times we, you know, it's, it's majority of the customers, I think all of the stores there that have twenty cars, they're open because it's all foot traffic. They have them parked, the only ones parking. And our sales have just not mattered. I've talked around, I, obviously, they're not going to tell me exactly. I've talked around, people across the street from me, they're doing sales that are equivalent to mine, and they don't have them parked.
Open for hours?
They're open for hours, yeah. Across the street, open for hours.
And there will be discounts that are.
Equivalents of hours, yeah, exactly.
Will they be open until later?
No, equivalent isn't like, the, I would say, if you were to extrapolate over the course of whatever I'm open with. So if they're open, say, twenty-four hours, if they're doing, say, you know, twenty-four hundred dollars in sales a day, that's a hundred dollars an hour, I'm doing by eleven, or whatever, whatever the hours, yeah, yeah. That's, that's the way I would say it, yeah.
There would be none. I mean, I guess what my big worry is that all the people in the street, right? Because it's on East Avenue, it's on a corner, all the people on the street, and then the cars, and the people on the street, and that's everywhere. The safety of the people were walking. Do you have any light up things on the ground, more people?
Sorry?
Like, light up things on the ground?
Like, you mean within the parking area, you mean?
Uh, you know how some of the parking lots that we come out of, sometimes there's light up things to let, let the walking people know, you're coming out?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
That's enough from the parking lot. You'd be like.
I know, I know. I mean, my concern, so I should just say, my concern are the people walking with the cars.
Right.
Twenty-four hours.
There's a sidewalk.
There's a sidewalk, yeah. But they get to the corner, they're crossing, crossing.
We, we've also renewed one of our entry exits as well, yeah.
Oh, the truck? Because I thought that there was.
The one on prospect, we, 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 there was a, two of them, we closed one of them off, yeah. To reduce the, you know, chance of encounter, yeah. Because that's.
That's not closed, yeah?
It's closed, yeah.
So the only entrance tonight is on East Avenue?
It's the, yeah, exactly.
So it's.
No, no, there's, there's the one, it's the only, on prospect.
Right, that's true. Yes, and that was, and that was a condition of the approval.
Yeah, yeah.
But the reason you raised, again, that was raised because of safety concerns as well. And we agreed, that's why we got rid of one of our prior entries. Yes.
I'm going to, can you listen to that, sir?
Uh, yes. Do you have any more questions to this? Okay, you can call your next one.
Okay. Uh, our next witness is Frank Anticell. These are professional planners, sworn and qualified. The applicant is the planner of the prior application.
Can you please say your names, say their last name for the record?
Frank Anticell.
Just want to be last name for the.
A N T I S E. I'll, you square off to the whole truth? I did.
Uh, somebody with a fore, a.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Ants, I know you also brought some specifics where you, Jim Air may not prefer, but I know you prepared a letter of report as well. So I would just ask you to kind of review that and go over your conclusions and findings, obviously, as a place to be justification for the. So.
And before that, I.
You want to answer the question?
Yes. One of the things that we, that the site did when it was upgraded was they replaced all the existing lighting with new L E D lights. So the site is better illuminated now than it was before renovation. And one of the things that the police have asked the owner to do is keep the lights on at night to help from a safety standpoint for pedestrians and also for safety of the site and the area. So, um, yes, uh, the applicant received approval in two thousand and twenty-two to convert the existing repair base into the convenience store. Uh, the convenience store is a permitted use in this zone. The existing gas component is not a permitted use, it's conditional use. So the reason why we're before the zoning board is because of the existing gas station that was there. And actually, changing the, the repair base to the convenience store actually brought the site more in the performing with your zoning plan. And, um, as part of the two thousand and twenty-two approval, the condition of the site before the approval was in bad shape. It was pretty rundown, it was pretty unkept. The new owner, I believe, has done a good job following the plan and improving the site. It looked much better than what it was. And I think that was one of the reasons why the board put some restrictions on the site was because of the condition of the site at the time, and the applicant wasn't really knowing the community at the time. Um, but again, he's looking to change the hours of operation. When we looked at a number of the gas and convenience stores in the surrounding area, almost all of them are operating twenty-four seven for both gas and convenience store. So, but we're just asking for the convenience store as part of this application. You know, the intent and purpose of the C three B zone, uh, is for commercial and uses to provide convenience goods and services, as well as household good, household goods, and both personal and local small businesses. So convenience stores definitely fit into the intent and purpose of the zone. And, um, we believe this provides a really good benefit for the community here. And now, the nice thing is having this open so that people from the bars can walk past it and go into it is actually a benefit because it keeps them from getting in their cars and driving someplace to a different convenience store if this wasn't available. So I think, it, it, in a way, it's, I think, helpful to keep people from getting behind the wheel. You know, the convenience store provides quick and convenient items for, uh, people in the area, mostly college students in this area. And, um, we believe that allowing this gives the benefits to the community and for the area.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Ants, so did you cover all of your testimony? Okay, very good. Um, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any further questions for your board.
Remember, there was a question for this. One question, you think the bars being let out at two, three in the morning and people possibly riding down East Avenue that aren't going to the bars would be safe for kids on the sidewalk, the cars moving in there to buy a pack of gum or?
I, I don't really think you're going to get much car traffic in there. Most of the car traffic is going to go to the onset of the gas open. I think most of your car tra, you know, most of your traffic in there is going to be foot traffic from the people leaving the bars, going back to their dorms or back to their off-campus housing.
Yeah, but it is the only convenience store that has a driveway leading into it. The other ones, there are no parking lots or anything in the front, so this, this to me is a safety issue. When you have college kids who probably aren't sober at two, three in the morning, walking the sidewalks, not looking out for traffic as it's coming in.
Right, well, I mean, I think the site being the way it's lit up, the way it is, I think, will help make that mitigate that, that issue. I mean, because right now, you have people turning in there, driving through into the site, thinking that it may be open. So either way, if we're open or closed, you still have the potential of someone driving into there. And if you were to turn off the lights, I actually think it makes it more dangerous because now you have someone driving into a dark area.
Mr. Chairman, also just to clarify your position on where you stayed on the convenience store. So, uh, Frank, I think we identified that there was an exit on the gas station convenience store on George Street. Correct? And I think they're open twenty-four hours, correct?
Yes, that was also.
Well, I did some research on this before I turn it to the public. And, uh, according to the city clerk, we had no, uh, prior, uh, variance application with this power stipulation. I've been on board for more than fifteen years, so this is the first time I've come across it. And as the city clerk, what's the, uh? And I asked the city clerk what the zoning is or what the board, the hours of operation are. And the two that you cited in your report are not allowed to open twenty-four hours. They're not in the city registry as opening twenty-four hours.
Which one, also?
That's the one, he says, that the Butler's Food Store and the College Farm Mart are open twenty-four hours. Butler's now is open until about three in the morning. The College Farm Mart has a paper sign on the windows that's open twenty-four hours. Neither one of them legally able to open past midnight.
Fair.
Their merchant license actually says eleven o'clock for Butler's and it says three P M. actually for the College Farm. So neither one of them open, are supposed to legally go for twenty-four hours. They have to go to the city police department and the police chief to have, there's a whole stipulation, G D, to have people, that stores open past midnight. Two employees, video camera surveillance, there's a whole litany of things. And got that permission from the police director to be open twenty-four hours. So as far as other stores being open already, you can't use that for an example because there's proof that they're not open.
Well, you're saying, you're saying all of those are...
They're open, but they're not open legally. Those two stores are not open legally.
Oh, those two?
Those two, and whatever other store is on Eastern Avenue. She said, nobody on Eastern Avenue corridor is legally, legally right now entitled to be open twenty-four hours.
Right, well, we did cite on Somerset, George Street, and other locations.
Okay, well, Eastern Avenue, we're talking.
Fair enough.
There's a bar, so nobody right now has permission to open twenty-four hours.
But it's not true.
So those, no, that's not true.
Those two examples are saying...
Two examples are not true.
Were not...
Their examples are not legal.
Were not legally open.
But when you, when you Google their hours and you go to the store and you look at the hours that are posted, that's where we got that information from.
Okay.
So, you know, just...
The city clerk is the one who keeps those records?
Oh, I understand.
Who, who's concerned?
Well, when the Google says it's open twenty-four hours and you go there and it has a sign on the door saying, open twenty-four hours, that's what we based our report on, which is what we observed in the area. So I did not go to the city clerk. But I do know that, you are aware that you needed video surveillance and you needed two employees, and the applicant already has the video surveillance that's needed. And he has no problem providing two employees. So we are aware of those requirements. And we are going to comply with those requirements if we're approved. And we know we have to go get the sign offs in order to be open twenty-four seven.
Okay, and one more thing. She did mention to me that there has been confirmation from the police department that following businesses were open past twelve A M. And your food store has been verified that they were open past twelve A M. The last couple of nights, when the police, when the clerk knew about the establishment supposedly being open twenty-four hours, she sent, the police, the police department asked to know what is open twenty-four hours. And she, they observed that your client's store has been open past midnight on a couple of occasions this past week.
Well, we did, if anyone would address that?
Yeah. Do we have those...
I can check on it. The clerk has the police reports?
I'll, I'll see.
They didn't forward them to me if they have them on record and that's what the police observed?
I would like to see that report.
They go past midnight?
Again, like I said, it could be as simple as a person trying to go in the restroom. But like I said, it takes time to do the closing. And from eleven o'clock...
I'll give you half hour, but midnight, midnight is twelve.
Half hour. We do stocking the shelves, because we don't have time during the day because the discussion's coming in now. We stock the cooler at night, we stock the shelves at night. We broom at night, we clean the bathroom at night. Oftentimes, the bathroom gets blocked, so we do that at night. That's the only time we have time to do all that. And in between all of this, my cousin's usually there. In between all of this, if someone's trying to get in, you said, can I please use the bathroom? I mean, as a safety command, we usually got a permit.
Well, yeah, that's a right.
And that, that happens more often than you would think.
But you're not, you're not...
We're not, we're not advertising, we're open, we're not saying, come on in. We're not doing any of that. It's just that if the time gets past, well, because it takes, I mean, it'll take an hour just to clean your house, that's a, you know, how big is a convenience store? And we clean every night. Place is specters, we had health inspectors and they said it's very convenient there. Compared to us.
It's got some cleanliness, I agree.
Right, okay, yes, yes.
You know, the hours of operation are what you're legally supposed to go until eleven o'clock. We made a stipulation because I was on the board when that happened.
Right.
Because it's all of college traffic, and the kids are walking in, cars pulling in for gas, whatever. So that's why you have a stipulation. And in my view, if those hours were taken advantage of and you were closing twelve, one o'clock in the morning, you weren't adhering to the eleven o'clock hours to begin with. Someone could faze, they're asking us to forget that you'll be open twenty-four hours when you haven't adhered to the eleven o'clock timeframe as it was. Or you might have said... The police have some reports.
Yeah, I, yeah.
I've confirmed that with the city clerk. Regardless, that was my comment regarding the safety. Any more comments from Mr. Antsop? Any other boards, any board members, have any questions, professionals?
Do we know, just to your comment, that they were open? The police report shows that they were open and selling or that they were, that lights were on? We don't know.
They, they said they were open past twelve o'clock.
Right, we don't know if they were actually selling.
They tried to open the door and look, but they did. The store they sell made that she did go into two establishments. The police went to two establishments and gave a warning to the people that were there and said they have to have a report showing, I don't know if it was jury proof. No, I don't think so. But I believe it was other two establishments, that if they're open twenty-four hours, they have to have an application from the city.
Seven eleven on Fourth Street, I asked.
Well, that's, yeah, that's, that's, we're just talking about the Butler's Food Store reference and the College Farm Food Mart. So they have been warned about being open past midnight. They were one or two nights, I was told, last week. And if they were open again tonight or last night, they'd be, they'd be summoned by the police department, open past midnight.
At least one business came to my office asking questions about it. I don't know which business, but they didn't mention all of them. Maybe the city clerk to apply or whatever process they were required.
And Mr. Chairman, I'm not disputing anything you're saying about the discussions with the clerk or the police, but I don't think it's an issue against some of the citizens.
No, you haven't been.
Yeah.
She said you haven't been, and I'm not sure if they warned you. But it was other, the other two establishments now have been, been, you know, illegally opening twenty-four hours.
Thank you.
Okay, so, yes.
Okay, so just clarifying, sure that I'm following everything. So, the two convenience stores that are cited here, one three eight Eastern Avenue and one on nine Eastern Avenue, are not allowed to be operating twenty-four hours. But they have given the perception that they are open twenty-four hours.
Correct.
They're not allowed. Then, last week or this week, the police went to the three locations.
They checked.
They checked. And they found out all three...
All three were open past midnight.
All three were open past midnight.
Right.
So all three were operating or open.
Wow, operating.
Operating, they said operating.
Operating past midnight.
And the definition of operating is like selling things?
You can go in and you can buy something.
Yes, and...
College Farm physically, I walked in there the other day, they have a sign saying, open twenty-four hours.
But they're not open.
They're not allowed, that's, that's the stipulation here. The city has an ordinance that said if you're open past midnight, you have to file paperwork with the city and the police director. And then the police mail that's right here. They haven't done that. And they're being, they're being, they're being warned and they're going to be signed.
But we don't necessarily know that this applicant is open. Lights are on, people are working.
They were turned being open past midnight.
But not so the operating is.
Whether they went in and pulled the door up and tried to buy back, not that one.
I mean, the applicant's representing that we were not operating. But it could be that the lights are on and someone's in there doing cleanup or closing after the night, but, so.
Okay. Good conversation. Any other, have any questions? All right, well, is that, I'm sorry, that?
It's going to be open regardless, even if you are, like cleaning up and re-stocking, like people are still going to be coming in. So that doesn't necessarily make sense whether you're saying it's not open because at the same time, people are coming in.
Yep.
So, I'm just honestly...
Well, again, I think there's...
Physically lock the door, you know, if you have a customer in, that's considered closing, right? But if he's letting people in while he's cleaning up, that's...
Well, I believe the opens, I believe the signs are not, the old signs are lit and they're off.
After eleven, they're off? Okay.
And that, I think, cops will say, if they observed it, you would have seen that they're open, so they're off.
Okay. Did you have a witness?
No, Mr. Chairman, that's it.
Any other questions to the person?
Yeah, so, if you just thought that you already opened for twenty-four hours, there's like a safety assessment that happens by the city. So the city does a safety assessment, make sure that you can traffic and everything will be okay. So is that clear? I don't know what I'm asking.
Yeah, copy, I have a copy of the city ordinance there that says if a business is open between the hours of twelve, midnight, and six A M., it must meet these conditions, or it must be at least two employees on continuous duty in the portion of the retail establishment. Establishment has in operation a video camera and silent alarms and burglar alarms to a central monitoring system to activate police response. A video camera and burglar system are approved, that they're approved by the police director and the city. And they have to have, use a Rob Safe on premises, they'll post a sign on the window, they then through the Safe on premises where the Safe is now accessible only to employees. And a couple of things here, the exterior must be limited, there's no parking.
It's crime related.
Crime related, crime related to the establishment, not safety related.
No, all the restrictions are crime based.
Just crime based, based on, you know, the hours. After, after midnight, between six o'clock. I don't want to read that, that's a little short, David, last week. All right, since we have no more professional witnesses, right? I'm open the, I'm open the public comments. Anyone from the member of the public, like to comment, make a comment on the board? Yes, sir.
Please state your name instead of last name for the record.
Name is John Gorga.
Please state your last name for the record.
The, the G A.
You swear from some, have a doubt trip?
I do.
Yes, I have.
Can we do the other side of the point? Hospitals are open twenty-four hours. They should be open twenty-four hours. I don't see many mergers open twenty-four hours. But we're talking about a convenience store being open twenty-four hours. I don't see C V S or Walgreens open for prescriptions, open twenty-four hours. And we need a food store open twenty-four hours. Can you give your lay of the land? By the way, my wife owns quite a bit of property in the area. And I have to say this, the quality of life for the residents in the area has deteriorated since they moved in. That's a fact, for me. There are three convenience stores. One on one corner, they're on the other corner, and diagonally across the street is another convenience store. Do you think that's overkill? Three convenience stores? And I heard that the police are pulling into the parking lot and EMS is making like he's the center of attraction. Well, there's bars on the corners. And the police are assigned, and they park their vehicles by the bars. And I believe there may be two police cars or two policemen and one car. Does EMS pull in here? Probably, but to make it a fact that they're sitting there all night is misleading you. It's not true. Okay? They have not adhered to their business hours whatsoever. The gasoline pumps, they're pumping gas past nine o'clock. They took over a shell station. And I grew up in that house next to the shell station. They respected all the residents in the area. They closed their pumps at nine o'clock. These were people that go to work every day. By the way, let me back up. Three of the houses that my wife owns, only one apartment is rented to a college student. And he has to have a master's degree, okay? Everybody else in our residence that she rents are professional people that go to work every day. There's one fellow that's been living there probably for twenty-five or thirty years in one of her apartments. So those gas stations would shallow here. By the way, I grew up there, okay, that's why I know this. They, the residents, they would always close it at nine o'clock. These guys are pumping gas past nine o'clock. And I've been told by a fellow that's been working nights driving home that sometimes when they're gone, the pumps are left on. And cars are pulling in, I don't know if this is factual or not. Pulling in, putting their credit card in, taking the nozzles off, and pumping gas. Okay, that's what I'm told. I would believe that they're not adhering to the stipulations we put down. I would believe they are leaving the pumps on at night to pump gas. They're just forgetting about it. Here's loitering going on. There's a car show in the summertime. There is. They have to call the police to break up your car show, okay? Nobody has, no one on the site has done it. They're not looking for the next fiasco that's going to be happening. There's overnight parking going on. Question, why in the world does a cab that pulls a tractor trailer, pulled in, parked there...
One minute warning, sir.
Two nights, okay, and has to be towed away? Not towed away, but no one addresses it. By the way, twenty-four hours, just so you guys know, what their students are gone approximately twenty weeks of the fifty-two year week. Think about it. They're gone June, July, August. Then they just add it up, come close, and close enough for government order. June, July, August. They leave December twenty-fifth, come back Martin Luther King. There's four more weeks, okay? Then they're gone for spring break. Now let me throw another weekend because they're drunk. So out of fifty-two weeks, they're gone twenty weeks. So we need a supermarket there open twenty-four hours. When the residents are gone. Want to tie him up?
Yes.
Because I can still go, because they want it. Thank you.
Okay. Another member of the public like to come forward and make a comment on this application? Yes. Okay, come forward, sir.
My name's Frank Shaw, S C I O T T O.
Do you swear from devil's... Nah, sorry. Do you swear from devil's lip without your vote trip?
I do.
Could you do me one favor, could you speak up and repeat the spelling of your last name for the recording?
S C I O T T O.
Thank you. You may be there.
Sure. Just, I own Old Queen's Tower in one oh eight Eastern Avenue and one sixteen Eastern Avenue. John stated our case for you before that there's been a lot of activity coming in and out of there that in their time, way past their, their assigned close time. My concern with being open twenty-four hours is it will track some of these areas. I'm concerned that coming in people, when they know it's open twenty-four hours, they come there, park their cars, lawyer, put the nice weather out, leave the music on. And as far as the safety issue goes, there is a lot of people that are walking there at nighttime. It, the more traffic that we have there, it is a safety issue. The more things can happen. A lot of people do get hit on Eastern Avenue. It's, nothing's going to happen, and it's going to be good. It's really not going to lend itself to anything better happening there, you know, open twenty-four seven. Butler's Food Store, I know that was brought up. They close at three A M. And College Farm, they, I do believe they are advertising twenty-four seven. I think they are. But I don't think that they should be open twenty-four seven. There's, like, better for the community by them being open. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, sir. Another member of the public like to come forward?
Sure.
Please say your name, spell your last name for the record?
Jonathan Gorga, G-U-A-R-I-N.
Do you swear for a total of truth, and I mean both truth?
I do. A few things, for one, you mentioned prior that do the cones go out when at 9:00 when the gas station closes? And yes, the cones do go at 9:00. But I have video on my phone from last Thursday at 10:57 p.m., cones out on the gas, so not adhering to the 9:00 p.m., not on the gas. I'll show you the video, I'll pack this in there for the record. A couple weeks ago, I'm sure it was some kind of a film paropic event that you were doing, where you had at, it was after 10:00 p.m., a sorority had a table set up on the, right in front of the store, selling or asking for donations, I'm not sure where it was, I'm sure it was Goodwill, but I think it was dangerous, I mean, you have people walking up, you have a table, a folding table sitting there, with two girls behind it, soliciting donations or whatever they're doing, and, and that was, it's a safety answer. Cars do come in and out of there, cars are not cautious, I don't know how you could slow the cars or do anything about the vehicles coming in at night, but it's dangerous, I mean, that, that, that lot is a open patio, basically, for everyone to gather, and because it's one of the few open spots on Eastern Avenue, and it has to be treated differently because of that. And beyond that, the 24-hour aspect, I, I don't see an advantage to that, I don't agree that College Farm should be open 24 hours, I don't believe there should be 24-hour businesses on Eastern Avenue. There's nothing that can come of it, after, basically, bars close, everything should be open. The, the street needs to quiet down, does residents live there? I live there, I have a business there. My neighbors are not all college students, there are some college students, of course, but they're also families, their, my neighbor has four kids, you know, kids get up in the morning, it's very loud, nothing can be done about that, and that's all I'm here saying, but this only adds to the extension of that hour, past when the bars close, is to 2:00 or earlier, we need noise curfews to, to quiet the neighborhood down and let everybody go to bed. And the residents there know that we're living in a college neighborhood and that it's loud, but there, there needs to be a shutdown, and just if there's people congregating in that lot, on that corner, it's just gonna extend everything and make worse for residents. And beyond that, the safety issues with the driveway are, are a major concern, and really need to be taken very seriously. That's all I have to say. Thank you, sir.
Is anyone else in the public, want to comment on this application? Just go forward. Okay, same number, close the public portion, uh, for discussion? If we, if you need to say some more?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, for the board takes, discusses this, rather than get into the specific issues and points that some of the residents are making, I think to your point, Mr. Chairman, it may be wise and advisable to maybe have the police review this a little bit further, and have them weigh in on this, I don't think there's any comments from them on the application to say, but, so I think it might be wise from the applicant's perspective and the board of the public to defer this, to allow the police to review the request, we could look at the issues that came forth, look at some of the complaints that the residents are making, and come back, and we could discuss that with them, and hopefully they can make a recommendation or assess the, the question of whether this is a, an appropriate recommendation to forward to the board, that's my own take of this, I agree with all of this.
When you say, the, basically, the applicant's way in, weigh in on what are you going to?
No, no, I think some of the, Dan, I think some of the questions and concerns and items raised by the residents, I think, for example, operating past current hours, whether there's been, whether there are safety concerns or other vehicles traffic or pedestrian movements up and down Eastern Avenue, I just think it would remove everyone if we could have, talk to the police and have them review this and assess, you know, the situation before the board votes on this, that's just my own sense.
I thought maybe you meant to preemptively, you know, pause this, go to the cops and, and apply for 24 hours, make sure you check all those bots, I just wanted to clarify what you meant, which I understand what you mean now.
I think the difference here is we're, we're subject to an approval.
Right.
That had to dish it, so we can't just bypass that. Yeah, sorry.
And right now, the clerk is working with the police on the two businesses that are supposedly open past midnight to verify, well, she has to verify that they're open, she has timestamps from police reports saying that they're open past midnight, which illegally, and so she's shutting that down now. She's been speaking the police with how the issue consenses, if anyone's open past midnight, going forward.
Right, and I think, I agree, rather than get into a tate and tate on some of the specific allegations, I don't think it serves anyone's purpose, I think the police are the best reviewer of this, and, you know, if necessary, the applicant's willing to meet with that, even before they review and make their report back to this board, before you guys could deliberate and discuss this, but that's my request.
So, are, are you asking us to reach out to the police to have them weigh in, or are you going to reach out to the police to have them weigh in? I just wanted to clarify what the request is.
Well, we're happy to do it, as the applicant, I just don't know whether it's more appropriate for, for your office to do that, Dan.
That's why I'm trying to figure it out, yeah.
I, I think it's probably more appropriate initially for your office to do that, but we're happy to meet with them if, if need be, because we'd like to discuss also the documentation that they have, and with the clerk's office and see exactly what's been provided, because we're certainly, the applicant's representing that there's been no intent to violate your prior conditions of this approval, but there may be instances where the convenience store was open beyond, you know, the 11:00 p.m. hour, but there may be reasons for that, and I think it might be helpful to look at that and have an explanation as well. And plus, the pumps themselves, if the motors are shut off, then they can't, nobody can pump gas, right? So, again, these are issues that we can't, the applicant can't respond unless we understand exactly what documentation that they may have.
All right, fair enough.
Are we allowing the other additional information? I mean, like, if you go talk to the police, the police aren't gonna say anything about, like, how do the pumps get turned off?
Uh, it's, it's, obviously, you're saying that, you know, if someone's gone in there.
Is it a video of?
If they have a video, that's why.
That's different, yeah.
Right, at the end of the day, we're not, we're not looking to modify the hours of the, of the gas station, if, if somebody observed that the, that somebody may have tried to open up one of the, one of the pumps, but if the motors are shut off, nobody can pump gas, so it's, you know, but I think the bigger picture here is safety, pedestrian, additional vehicular traffic, and whether or not the police have issues that they may want to bring to our attention and the boards, and I think if, if the planning and engineering office could reach out to the police to discuss this, I think it would be helpful for everybody, so we're all better educated.
All right, so we'll do that, we'll reach out to the police department.
Yeah.
And, and the director to see what their recommendations are.
Yeah, so the only question I have is, do we wanna defer this to a date certain, so that I don't have to, the applicant doesn't have to read out this, that was the other question. And the problems all here, so.
So the only thing is, I can't promise that we can get a turnaround by next meeting.
Right.
There's a lot of moving parts to something like this.
I understand.
So if we wanna put a date certain, I will say the July meeting.
That would be July?
I'm gonna go check.
Second of July.
Yeah, question, so, um, let's see, Mr. Park and say, you know, we'll do everything, and assess how natural we feel with safety, based on some of the concerns, would potentially open 24 hours, maybe the bars close?
I think there is a situation, because this was a unique situation, the board has a separate hours law, so we have to, to tell me.
Close at 2:00 instead of?
He could stay, he must stay at 1:00. He could go 12, and not go past, and that, the stipulation where you have to have the police involved, once you close at 12, there's no police involvement, there's no video cameras, there's not a lot of stipulations you don't have to meet. Once that goes down at midnight, then it's a whole nother candlework. So we can put any stipulation we feel is comfortable for our board, for the safety of the neighborhood, for the quality of life for the residents, and be a detriment to the public good, so if we feel that any hour we impose on them is good in our conscience, then that's what we have to do.
So it's July 28?
July 28. Okay, so right now, we'll table till July 28th for a little further information.
Yeah.
From the police director, and continue with our discussion, and then we can take it up on the vote then.
Fine, if it turns out that we, you know, official time is needed, we'll, obviously, we can coordinate with.
And if you wanted to amend those, that 24-hour stipulation you're looking for, to 12:00 o'clock, that might be amenable too, that way you don't have to worry about any extra security and an extra time, and maybe the neighbors would be one hour, I don't see it would be a problem if they're, you know, but that's up to you obviously.
Fair enough. All right, for the July 28th?
Yes.
July 28th, that's right.
I didn't need to take a vote, we just.
There, there's no votes taken right now.
No, I think it's a move to.
No.
You just.